The meeting of Kimberly City Council. Whoops. Held here on the homelands of the Tenaha peoples. Do we have any late items this evening, Maurice?
There is no late item, Mr. Mayor.
All right, hearing none. Can I have a mover to adopt the agenda, please? Counselor Cairns, thank you. Counselor Fox seconds. All those in favor. That motion is carried. And could I have a mover to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting held on February 24th? Counselor McGuire moves. Counselor Robert seconds. All those in favor. That motion is carried. All right, before we get into kind of the regular business for the evening, we have the pleasure of a special presentation here this evening. I will. Awesome. Thank you very much. So it gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce a person who's no stranger to these council chambers, Mr. Jack Radcliffe. Jack patrolled these hallways for, I think, 29 years, Jack. In 29 or 30 years. It was a very long time. And we were very fortunate to have Jack within his guidance. And basically, he ran shotgun over the finances of the city for those 29 or 30 years. In honor of his public service, we have an award that we give out annually. It's the Jack Radcliffe Commitment to Community Award. And we're really pleased to have Jack here tonight to present the award. So there's a lot of talk over the last couple of years about volunteerism, how difficult it is, how it's changing, and how difficult it is to get volunteers to step up and how those that do are getting tired, they're getting burnt out. There just is a lot of talk about that. I will say that we do have an individual that we are presenting this award here tonight that has, again, for pretty close to 20 years, I think, Jim. Is it 20 that you've been in Kimberly now?
Yeah, 20, 21.
Yeah, 20, 21 years. And over that 21 years, Jim has organized and seen to fruition a large number of events here in Kimberly, some that everybody will remember or recognize, I should say, is the Round the Mountain, Symphony on the Mountain, the tattoo, the pipe band tattoo. Hard to believe that was 10 years ago or almost 10 years ago now. I think I saw something that another one is coming up. Yep. What they are thinking. I think you may be part of that, Jim. And many of the orienteering events that it's a kind of a special, a special place that Jim has for orienteering here in the community. The bottom line is, there are a host of events where Jim has had literally hundreds of volunteers come out to work the events that he has been part of. And over that last 20 years, those events have made this community a better place to be. And I would like to call Jim Webster up to accept this award. The Jack Radcliffe Community Award. Congratulations and thank you for everything you do for this community. Yeah, you get to keep that one. You get to keep that one. Awesome. So Jim, step up to the podium here. You need to say a few words and take as much time as you wish.
Okay. I like to organize events. I'm not so big on the speeches. But it's been a really great experience for me being in Kimberly these last 20 years and being able to organize things, be involved in things, and bring other people into those projects. And a few of them are here today that have supported me and they always wonder what I'm going to try and drag them into next. But I think Kimberly really has a good core of volunteers. I mean, there's so many sporting events, special events, food recovery, you know, all sorts of things, coaching, kids' sports and stuff. So I think as much as it is hard to get volunteers, I think Kimberly is lucky in that we have some very good volunteers and key volunteers. But volunteering and organizing events isn't just one person. It's the team that supports you. And I think if you have the right attitude and can work with people, you can bring them in and help you and make those events that much better. And I think everybody benefits from it. The people who participate, you as an organizer, and the people who volunteer, they can walk away with some experiences that usually they'll come back and if they've had a good time, they'll come back again the next year. Or maybe they'll branch off and do some of their own things. So I think it's tough to get volunteers sometimes, but I think if you give people a project that they can take pride in and a role and don't hold their hand too much, let them be creative, then they'll all shine. So hopefully I'll have the energy to keep doing a few more things and thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here today, Jack. We really appreciate it. So we'll see you same time next year, Jack. See you, Babs. See you, guys. Thanks for being here. All right. Okay, next up, we have a delegation this evening. The folks from the Public Library are here to present the budget. Teagan and Dan, going to take the lead. Awesome.
The library, I haven't met him in person. I'm sad I missed that opportunity, but he's everywhere in the history of the library, so.
That was one of his special, one of his special assignments.
Oh, was it?
I don't know how many years he was on the library board as the treasurer, but it was, I don't know, 100 or something.
At least. I mean, I have cupboards full of his very precise accounting, so.
Yeah, that's awesome. Welcome tonight, Teagan.
Thank you very much. Hello, thank you for having me, having us. It's nice to see you all. I am glad to say that I have seen all of you outside of this room. Some of our encounters were a little more expensive than others. Just looking at somebody over there, just saying. But it's nice. It's nice to see you guys, that you're all out in the community and are chosen leaders, participating in our civic life. It's great. Today, I'm not going to give you guys a whole bunch of numbers and statistics. I am going to take this opportunity to wax poetic about the value of libraries because there's nothing I like more than talking about libraries and captive audiences, so. If time permits, like at the end of our presentation, I'd love to hear your thoughts on the library, what you want the library to be, what you think it should be, what you think it could be. And if we don't have time at the end of this, that's fine. And if you do have thoughts or, you know, that you want to share with me on that, I would love to have an email or anything from you. You guys have a very unique bird's eye view of the challenges and the situation. So any insight you guys have on the library and the community would be very, very interesting to me. So libraries are dedicated to serving the public good. So to me, that means upholding things like intellectual freedom, privacy, and context and nuance, things that I think are sometimes rare and are actually very valuable things that we shouldn't lose. We have so much access to information right now, which prevents both opportunities and challenges. The sheer amount of content available can sometimes make it very difficult to separate fact from fiction and opinion from volume, let's say. So libraries provide a place for people to slow down, to think critically, and to engage with ideas in a meaningful way. Libraries uphold intellectual freedom, the right of every individual to seek and receive information from all points of view without interference. We do not curate content based on financial incentives or personal data. We don't have an agenda. We don't pretend to know you, your story, your values, or how you engage with the information. And we don't seek to convince you of anything other than perhaps your own self-worth. Instead, we provide access to a diverse range of ideas and perspectives, encouraging curiosity and independent thought. Libraries are deep wells of information where people can explore complex topics in detail and engage meaningfully with the knowledge that they choose to pursue. One of my most favorite quotes on that is, "A truly great library contains something to offend everyone." Privacy is also something that is very near and dear to the library's mission. So where personal data is mostly a commodity, libraries remain one of the few places where your privacy is respected and, in fact, protected. When you walk into a library, you enter a place where your interests, questions, and explorations remain your own. You can seek out knowledge without fear of being tracked, judged, or influenced, and you're free to learn and grow on your own terms. Privacy allows you to gauge in the topics or issues that you find interesting or concerning. For example, a teenager exploring their identity can do so without worrying about the reactions of others. A colonizer can try to understand truth and reconciliation and systematic racism without the fear of looking stupid or asking stupid questions. Privacy is more than just a personal preference. It's a fundamental human right that is super important if you're trying to become a better human. Libraries are one of the few places where everybody and anybody can come together, not in competition or debate, but in quiet presence with one another, either for a group activity or as an individual. As quintessential third spaces distinct from home or work, libraries offer a neutral and welcoming environment where individuals can coexist harmoniously and respectfully. Hopefully, that's the goal, but. Libraries are more than just a building with books or a place that constantly requires upkeep. It's a fully democratic public place, a place where anyone can go, free from commercial influence to think and explore and connect. It offers context, privacy, and the freedom to engage with knowledge in a way that's personal and meaningful. So it's where a teenager finds a quiet refuge from the pressures of school and social expectations, where they're not asked to perform, to pose, or prove themselves. They can just be. It's where a newcomer finds their first friend, learns a new language, meets their neighbors, and begins to build a life. It's where a senior comes not just for books, but for continuity and connection. These moments happen every day quietly, without fanfare. They don't generate revenue. We exist to serve. But that service is only possible with support. Every program, every resource, every welcoming space we provide depends on an investment in the belief that knowledge, belonging, and personal growth should be accessible to everyone. And now here's Dan.
Thank you, Teagan, for setting the stage. Now I get the fun part of numbers and such. For context, I grew up attending the library and being read to as a child from Arlene Grasdl. And I, with a kind of a brief interest in being involved with the board, I had the opportunity to be presented the financials by Jack Radcliffe some 11 years ago, which went totally over my head. But I am honored to recognize my predecessors as Jack and Greg Bradley, I'd like to make honorable mention this evening, the previous chair of the library board. And now I'm humbled and honored to be in this role. We are going into our centennial in 2027, as I understand, and it's an exciting time to, you know, look to the library for its future and the opportunities that it has. We, from a governance standpoint, I'm looking to undergo a strategic planning process for the library, identifying, you know, our strengths and weaknesses and opportunities. And to do so, I will be, we will be looking to enhance the composition of the board. And so stay tuned in the weeks ahead for proposed amendments to the city bylaw to allow for more composition or more board members to engage with individuals that are looking to support the community and particularly the library. I'm going to, to acknowledge the budget. I'm going to ask that we, if you have it in front of you or if it's in front of us here, we're going to go right to the bottom and to acknowledge and take notice of the $75,000 deficit that is projected for our operations this year. And I want to address this number because it, you know, it might be a little scary to some, but I want to put it into context. We have still $60,000 sitting in a term deposit that was part of $100,000 that was given from the province as a one-time enhancement grant three years ago. And so we have that money available to us to cover the majority of this deficit of this year. There has not been significant increase to library funding in the province for 16 years. And it's hurting libraries all over. The Association of British Columbia Library, Public Library Directors, are undergoing a campaign titled "Overdue." You might recognize this card from when libraries used paper cards for their sign-in, sign-out. I'll just read the first kind of key points here. Since a 25% cut in 2009, provincial funding to B.C.'s public libraries has been largely frozen. That's 15 years of rising costs, population growth, and increasing service demands without sustained funding. Investment in public libraries is essential to B.C.'s post-pandemic recovery, competitiveness, and resilience. Without consistent core funding, local libraries will be forced to reduce services. It's time to increase the annual provincial grant to B.C.'s public libraries. We're overdue. And so with this 2025 budget, we labored over it and we feel comfortable that we can operate in this year as per normal, which is great. Normal is great. Teagan has done a great job bringing the library to life and creating a very positive work environment and a strong staff team and making outreach into the community for community connections and increased programming and services. But we are trying to bet our maximum. We're in our maximum, obviously financially, and also we're limited in our existing space. And so we are navigating our ability to serve as a library with that in mind, with the space that we have and then particularly the funding that we have. And so we are asking the city to consider in their budget an increase of 5%, which translates as about $9,600. And this money would effectively cover the compliance of the existing collective agreement to effectively cover 30-minute lunch breaks when the past practice has been an hour. And so there's a small increase to the wage expenses, given the existing collective agreement, that this money would effectively cover. And recognizing the city may be tight themselves with their budget, we, I don't want to press you for any more than 5%, but if there were to be some additional revenue, we would make great use of it. There's an opportunity to bring our staffing capacity up another 12 hours. And that would bring the staff to about four full-time equivalent positions. But then, as I've said, like that is effectively kind of our max capacity for operations, as it were. We are very much recognizing that there are other revenue opportunities and we are looking as a board to be proactive in sourcing those out. I represent the Kimberly Library with the Cootney Library Federation. And there's several library federations within the province that then advocate for libraries at the provincial level. And it was suggested to us that another avenue for additional revenue would be sought through the RDEK, as we do support RDEK population in library services. And that's an avenue that I'll be exploring with the Cootney Library Federation more so. As mentioned, the provincial funding is sorely lacking and for, you know, in its increase for the, you know, to make up for, you know, 16 years of, you know, financial changes and inflation. And so again, through the library federations and otherwise the library directors, the association of, there is advocacy to push the province as well to increase funding. We do see from time to time kind of one-off enhancement grants, as you'll see in, if we can go to the top of the budget, please. There, in the actuals, there was an additional $11,000 that came to us by surprise. And similar to the three years ago, the $100,000 enhancement grant was a surprise to us. And while very much welcomed, it's not, it's not possible to budget. They are surprise grants and we can't necessarily work with those in our outlook.
Is that the $20,000, Dan, you're referring?
No, sorry, in B.C. provincial grants, 2024 actuals, you'll see the difference of $11,800.
Right, okay.
We are, yeah, the question of other grants is a little tricky to navigate because grants are often, they're not operational money. They're tied to programming and, as mentioned, we're kind of maxed out with our available space. I will make mention that there is a developing sentiment amongst community groups to work collaboratively with, you know, in less of a centralized model and to work collaboratively for programming for the spaces that we have, you know. And so, you know, we may pursue grants as such for more creative collaborative community projects or programming. But we can't necessarily pursue grant money quite avidly because it doesn't support us in our operational budget. Donations do in part. And we are, as a board, recognizing that there is a generosity within the community towards the library. And we're looking at ways in which to encourage that and to connect with that. And then I suppose in revenue, an honorable mention to the Friends of the Public Library for their great, successful bookstore and the ways in which they support us. It's from my time, you know, this is my fourth year now with the library board, and I've seen that Friends grant move from $8,000 to a communicated $20 upcoming. And so I suppose that's where we're at in consideration of revenue. We, as I said, have labored over the budget at large. There's very little that we're comfortable trimming from our expenditures without compromising the very services of the library and, you know, the premise being literature and books. And, yeah, effectively, and unfortunately, without an increase in funding, we are considering and cognizant of having to make cuts in the 2026 season. And so thankfully, we're not there. You know, we're able this year to run kind of business as usual, which is excellent as it is. And, but it is on our mind that that's sort of the position that we're in.
So counsel, questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor McCain.
Yeah, just kind of building off of Dan. Well, first of all, actually, I'd just like to acknowledge, Teagan's very modest. She's done an incredible job as Director of Library. She came in at a relatively tumultuous time and it's really kind of turned things around. And what she said right there expressed my feelings exactly about what a library means to not only our town, but society as well. Really, really well put. Dan, as well as taking on this role as chair, and there is a new energy, I will say, within the board, some new members. It's a very diverse group, a lot of different ideas, which is great. But the thing that I just wanted to, you know, highlight to counsel is, this is just, it's a really small analog kind of to what we deal with here, you know, with respect to, nobody wants to cut services. Like, we sit around the table and, you know, fuss about this every single year. And they're in the same group. But I think the focus on the higher levels and putting some pressure on the provincial government in particular is a really good move. And I really hope that the campaign, the overdue campaign, is successful. But I just wanted to give a shout out to Dan and to Teagan for all the work they've done. And it's really important work.
All right, thanks, Counselor McCain. Counselor Roberts, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just like to, I appreciate your point of view and sharing that with Teagan. It's great to see things going the way they're doing. My husband and I are both regular library users. But I have bordering on being sacrilegious about books. But I have bordering on being sacrilegious about books. Is there, you talk about space and maybe you're outdoing your space. Is there a very process inside of libraries where things that have seen their day, not just worn out, but no longer current or relevant, can be purged to give you more space? Does that ever happen, or am I, is that craziness?
Did a lot of that. We went through, there was books on the shelf that when you pulled them off, they literally fell apart in your hands. So we've spent the last two years going through everything. And we have space in our collection right now that we can, you, I mean, we have one full aisle. And I mean, it doesn't sound like much, but in library terms, this is like a mansion, right? So we have room, but we're gonna move, we're gonna use that because our kids' collection is so jammed in, right? So it's, it's more just the, like, the space of the library. We're, we're creative within it and with what we can do. And we do definitely get rid of small books. But it doesn't help with the, the sort of the bigger picture, the longer term. So, yeah, but thank you for that.
All right, thank you. Council Karen, go ahead.
Thank you. So, yeah, thank you so much for your presentation. And, yeah, also, you know, libraries are so critically important and becoming more important all the time. And our library is amazing. And so thank you for all your creative energy and all you're doing for, for the community. And you make that happen on a shoestring and in a really limited space. So, yeah, kudos. And, and I'm, I'm interested in what you're seeing in terms of user numbers. You know, to think that you might need to be cutting back at a time when I imagine that your user numbers are increasing fairly quickly. And then my second question would probably be more to maybe to staff. But I'm just wondering around the, the thought of RDEK. And what do we know about other communities where they may have agreements with RDEK to be contributing to the operations of, of libraries? So the first question I'll turn over to, to Dan and to Tegan around the user numbers. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks. Yes, and I was gonna put that in my presentation. But so I'm, I'm putting together right now, like, basically like a five-year of all of our stats. It's gonna be on our website, so all of those numbers will be there. They are increasing, everything is increasing. Our interlibrary loans are increasing, our storytime numbers are increasing, people coming through the doors increasing, it's all just going up and up and up and up.
So can you speak to the RDEK grant, the fifty-one thousand proposed for twenty twenty-five?
In what sense?
Well, that money is coming in from the RDEK. The RDEK does fund the libraries, I guess.
Yeah, we, I, I haven't been in contact with them. You'll notice if you have the budget, I can read it out. The, the twenty twenty-four actual was forty-seven thousand three hundred, four hundred. And though the budget was forty-nine thousand nine hundred. And I can't recall the conversation surrounding the, the budget and actual. But I do, given, you know, we, we have an adjustment of a three percent increase. I suppose that's a bit of a hope, that they'll recognize sort of just the, the rise of cost of living as, as it is, and, and we'll see an increase. But there, there is a grant that we do receive from the RDEK, and it's a guarantee, yeah.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, thanks very much for the presentation, we appreciate it, guys. And we will, we will chat again.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Okay, moving on, the next item is one that's come back. I think this for the third time over the last six months or so. And that is the draft policy for the Council Code of Conduct. The motion on the floor is the count approve the draft policy as, as outlined in the, in the staff report. Have a mover. Thanks, Council McGuire, and Council Karen seconds. All right, Maurice, did you want to preface questions with a couple of comments on this?
So like you said, this is a different iteration of the Code of Conduct. The original one was presented to council in twenty twenty-three, and we've had the change on council and change with the C A O since then. So it was determined that it was better to wait until we had that more stabilized to have further discussion on the Code of Conduct. This new draft policy reflects some of the lessons learned in the last two years from best practices and code of conducts that have been prepared by other municipalities. And further to the last meeting we had with council, we added some content, including an actual, actual adjudication process that would guide the C A O or the corporate officer in making sure the process is followed by an adjudicator if there was indeed a complaint against the Code of Conduct, which is a little bit of a procedure, but would been, would, would bring some clarity to the process if there was a complaint.
All right, thanks, Maurice. Council Roberts, go ahead.
Well, first of all, thank you guys for, for, for this document in the form that it is. I was reading it, trying to find a reason not to like it, or find a reason to pick on it, or find something that didn't feel right, and absolutely could not find anything that I wanted to highlight and say, well, what about? Because I, I could imagine your thinking based on some of the stuff that's been going on in the province and, you know, the difficulties other, other municipalities have been having. And it feels to me as, from what I could read, that this is a pretty tight document with really clear and understandable data for any one of us that wants to look in it. The answer is there. And I, I'm, I'm, I have to commend you on trying, it's no small item, this document. And, and nor is it frivolous, and I appreciate the hard work you did.
So I take that to mean you read through it in its entirety?
Well, I did a little bit of scanning.
Because I could tell you, I do have a complaint, and that is it's
It's too long.
It's nineteen pages long.
Well, I did take a course on speed reading.
Having said that, if we break it up, the first nine and a half pages are actually the policy itself. And the next nine pages are procedures. And I guess the only suggestion I might have is that we break that into two pieces where we've got the actual policy, and then the procedures would be an addendum to the policy so that it's separate from that. And that way, it looks like it's nine pages instead of nineteen, a little more digestible. And at the end of the day, it's really that first nine pages that are the most important in any event. That would be kind of the follow-up on your, on your comments, and you're the only real complaint. Go ahead, Council McGuire.
Yeah, similar comment, comments, I, I read the whole thing. And, yeah, the, the nine or ten pages of procedure, it was, I, I was, my head was spinning, I'll be honest. I think it could be simpler, but I'm, I don't have to actually implement that. So I'll leave that to whoever, you know, the arbitrator, I guess. Looks like a fun process, I hope we don't need to use it.
Further, go ahead, Council Karen.
I, I really appreciated the document, and, and I, yeah, it is, you know, really comprehensive. So, you know, I think that that's really helpful because if we do actually need it, it's spelled out. And so it's not as though it's something that we, you know, anticipate needing to use. But if we do end up in that situation, I do think that having a really comprehensive, well-laid-out process that's not open to interpretation is exactly what we need. So, yeah, thank you, we appreciate it.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I'll look at your lack of weight. Simple, direct, effective, thank you.
Any further comments? So the only other comment I had, I'm just scrolling here to try and find it. I think it was toward the beginning. The, any, any council inquiries on any operational issues? Go through the single point of contact, which is the C A O, and it's inferred, but it doesn't say that explicitly. And I think it would be useful if we're looking at next election, you know, possibly new councillors coming in. It would be, it would be useful to make that a little more explicit, given that this will be one of the key documents that candidates read either before or after the election. Council Fox, go ahead.
I just have a question about that, which is, at what point do we get help for Jim? Because I'm worried that with everyone going through Jim, because Jim's sort of main point of contact for a lot of things, Jim's gonna burn out, and Jim's not gonna be happy Jim anymore, and I don't want to see that happen. So is there like a point where there's a threshold? Or is that Jim's like, Jim just has too much, he's like, too much, and that's how
Maybe explain how you deal with, with these things.
Yeah, I think I just need to be smart enough to know when to move that stuff onto my staff as opposed to taking it on myself. So I, I really do think it's in large part a matter of delegation. I appreciate the sentiment.
All right, further, call the question, all those in favor, that motion is carried. Thanks, council. Sorry, I don't know, maybe I know what you're referring to.
Keeping the policy, yes.
The policy is, yes, that's correct, yeah.
So I'll put that in the file for the next review, that it would be better with a schedule. Does that work?
Okay, thanks, Maurice. Okay, next up is the annual transit operating agreement, an amendment actually to the twenty-four, twenty-five agreement. The motion on the floor is that the C A O and manager of planning and sustainability be authorized to execute the amendment, the amended twenty-four, twenty-five annual operating agreement with B C Transit. Council McGuire moves, Council Fox seconds. Go ahead, Troy. What are we doing here?
Thank you, Mayor McCormick. This is a bit of a formality, I guess. This really just reflects the changes that have been, already been implemented for this past winter season here, or this current winter season, with the expansion of the Peak de Placel Winter Shuttle. Council will recall some time ago approving the memorandum of understanding with B C Transit and then provincial budget authorizing the, the funding and resources required to implement that expansion. So we have successfully implemented the additional five hundred and fifty-five hours of service and the expanded fleet by one extra bus to accommodate that extra service and also to kind of supplement the other, other routes within our system. And by all reports, that's been working quite well so far this winter. So this is a little slower coming to us, that, like I said, that was implemented with the start of the shuttle season in, in December twenty-seventh and is, is gonna be operating until the end of the ski season here, first week of April. This amendment applies to B C Transit's fiscal year, which ends at the end of the month here. So, so it's, it's a bit of a formality, I guess. But we wanted to make sure that council received this information and, and we'll hope that you'll approve that and we'll return a signed copy to B C Transit as soon as possible.
Next year.
And I guess on that note, we can be expecting to see the, the annual operating agreement for the next fiscal year, probably, you know, maybe even next month or something, we should have that soon.
Yeah, thanks, Troy. One question here on the Schedule A tariffs and fares, those are remaining, there's no change? Three-dollar single fare.
That's correct, yeah, the, there's no, no changes to anything but those, a couple of minor amendments pointed out in the report. So which is just the recognizing the additional hours of service and then just recognizing the, the changes in Schedule C of the, of the budget there. So a little bit of increased revenue, a little bit of increased expenses there for the, for the system.
Awesome, yeah, thank you. Council, questions or comments? All the question, all those in favor? Any opposed, that motion is carried. Thank you, Troy. Next up, we have an opportunity to comment on a liquor license amendment for three forty Mark Street, which is the charcoal pub. The motion on the floor is that council opt out of providing comment to the liquor and cannabis regulation brands with regard to the proposed amendments. Could I have a mover, please? Council McGuire moves, and Council Karen seconds. All right, we don't get that many of these, Troy, but can you kind of explain why the position is opt out?
Yeah, we do, they kind of sometimes come in waves, it seems. But this is a fairly, fairly minor change overall, in my view. This restaurant operation is what's considered a food primary liquor license, meaning that food is always served when there's alcohol service available. And they're making two, or proposing two changes to their licensing. One, which will extend the hours of liquor service past midnight to up until two A M, seven days a week. And the other one is to allow what they call patron participation entertainment. So music entertainment, either live or, or recorded, and, and a dance floor space as part of the, as part of the bar pub area there. So the, the way the, like, the liquor licensing rules and regulations are set up, those require kind of this authorization process. We have communicated with council in the past about, our typical response is to opt out of providing that, providing comment. Part of the rationale for that is, is just to remove that kind of administrative burden from, from the city, from the staff, to, to sort of facilitate that and request that. If we, if the city opts out, then that does go back to the applicant and, and the province to, to monitor that and, and implement that. And in our view, that's a, a more efficient and effective way to make that happen. Similarly, we, we have talked to council in the past about putting some structure around delegating this to staff so that we don't have to come back to council regularly. And we are still working on a kind of a framework for that where we'll try to put some, some goalposts, if you will, about what kinds or what, you know, what types of application, what's, what sorts of amendments or new proposals can be just delegated to staff to deal with. And then anything outside of that would come back to council to, for a process similar to this, I guess, but
Yeah, excellent, thank you.
It'd help make it a little bit more time-efficient for, for all involved, including the applicant and, and, and the city as well.
Thanks, Troy. So there is, there is public comment, we just don't collect it. The province has to collect it, go through and pay for the process to have to
Precisely, yeah.
Go ahead, Council.
I guess just a quick question, is staff willing to take on this extra work? And do you have the capacity to do something like this without being overburdened with your work that you already have?
Yeah, what we're, I mean, in this particular case and what we're recommending overall, it would actually be less burden for us because it would minimize the times we're bringing a report forward to council and putting all that, that extra work into those steps. And when, if the, the goalposts, as I say, are, are set and clear, then we know what fits in that. We can make that determination and, and proceed as soon as we're notified about the opportunity for comment.
Yeah, this puts the onus on the province to do the work, not us. Thanks for that, Troy. Council McGuire, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd for, support that moving forward. Even though FYI in a, in my email inbox would be more than sufficient for something like this, in, in my opinion. And then, yeah, if there was something drastic, then maybe bring it to council. But discretion, on discretion, the staff would be totally fine.
Thanks for that, Council McGuire. Okay, further, call the question, all those in favor, any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, we have one item of correspondence this evening, move receipt, please. Council Karen's moves, and Council McGuire's seconds. Any comments? Go ahead, Council McGuire.
Yeah, I think that there's some merit to the letter, you know, we're looking at double the costs. So it's something to at least keep in mind and maybe have discussions about at some point. I wouldn't mind if Tony reached out to me and had a conversation. But I, I'm also not sure whether this is make or break for the Airbnbs. Again, I just don't have enough context to really know the details of the financial burden.
Yeah, fair, fair comment. Council McPain?
Yeah, I, I would echo what he had to say. And just, I, I think the other thing that was somewhat troubling is the lack of response by the, the provincial branch, I think, would be somewhat concerning if I was in, in their shoes. And just, I guess, just the redundancy of, of the whole, the whole thing. I understand that, you know, it's a new process and a lot of municipalities are I understand that, you know, it's a new process and a lot of municipalities are probably not, this may not even be on their, on their radar. And, and, you know, we, we have taken some steps to put a policy in place and, but it does, it does on the surface feel a little bit redundant. But as, as Woody said, I, I don't have a lot of context to go on.
Fair, fair comment. This is, um, what I would describe as the one-size-fits-all, uh, that we, uh, very often see coming from, uh, Victoria. Basically, the lower mainland have all kinds of issues. I can say that, um, a number, I don't know how many, but the majority of resort municipalities have gone back, uh, to the tourism ministry to express, uh, concern over this. And the tourism ministry, in return, has taken up the charge with housing and, um, municipal affairs, which is kind of where this all resides. So I think, um, there's work underway. I think there's a reason to be somewhat optimistic that they'll take a look and, and, you know, see the error of the ways for certain communities that allows some flexibility, but, uh, we have not heard anything back on that, uh, as of yet. Counselor Roberts?
Uh, just to play devil's advocate for a moment, one of the things that we talked about when we started having to enter into this short-term rental piece was we already knew how much abuse was taking place and that we would, if we were gonna enter into a program like this, we were gonna have to have some way of, of monitoring it and making sure that people were staying in safe environments, et cetera, similar to a hotel. And, and I think the, the devil's advocate piece of it is that, that there's a cost to that. And that cost, if we decide to do it in Kimberly, is a direct cost to us. So I, I don't agree with the doubles, the double stuff here, but, uh, you know, let's not lose sight of the fact that we do have to have our finger on it if we're gonna keep people safe.
Yeah, so to be clear, the, um, the S T R, there is an association of short-term rental owners and operators that is getting up and running. Keestra, uh, my apologies for not knowing exactly what that is, Kimberly, short-term rental folks, in any event. And, uh, um, everybody is pretty, um, I'm gonna use the word pretty happy with the bylaw that we brought in place, and everybody has been very compliant with it. Uh, we made really good headway, I think, Troy. What was the last number of business licenses? We saw a hundred and fifty-some odd?
I just, just checked again today. Uh, we're sitting at, I think it's a hundred and sixty-seven so far this year. Uh, towards the end of last year, we were about a hundred and seventy-four. Um, so we're, we're rated in around that area.
Awesome.
Perhaps there's a few that have dropped out. There's, uh, a few new ones as well. Um, and, uh,
Which is the majority of the operators out there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, um, you know, the, there's, there's always a bit of a, uh, some uncertainty about how many other operating short-term rental, um, units there are out there. And, you know, part of, you know, I think in, in, in our view, the, you know, our own licensing system is, is helpful to kind of get a handle on that and help to kind of oversee and, and manage those and, and make sure we're clear on where those are and, uh, to seek compliance when there's, when there's unauthorized operations or, um, you know, somebody just, maybe they're eligible for authorization, but they just haven't, haven't sought that yet. Um, and I think, you know, it's still kind of early with the new provincial registry requirements. You know, we, we totally understand the, the concern about the, uh, the two sets of fees. I think, you know, with time, that's something that can, will certainly probably be reviewed and, and, and modified to some degree. But, um, I think, you know, our, our initial reaction here with the short-term registry of the provinces, it's, it's, it's an extra layer, an extra tool for us to use, for the province to use, for local governments to use to, to make sure we're getting a good handle on this. You know, I think, I think there's some, some positive overlap and, and, um, they can work collaboratively and cooperatively to make sure that we're getting full compliance. You know, there's some concern about, you know, some, some short-term rental operations closing down because of those costs. I think, you know, and that, that may be the case. There may be some. I think it's probably a small, fairly small percentage. And I think part of that is those operators are having to face a, face that question. Is, is, is this too much for what we're getting from that? And there's, you know, there's some, some units that are used heavily and some that are just used very infrequently. And it's probably those ones that are used less frequently. They're gonna, they're gonna make that decision to, to shut down. And, um, I think the province has done a, quite a good job of the information that they've made available to, you know, operators, the listing platforms, the, the local governments on, on, you know, kind of what the intent, what the purpose of that system is. And, uh, you know, it's, it's, you know, uh, as we've gone over lots of times, the short-term rentals are very important, in Kimberly especially. They're a very important, uh, component of our accommodation supply. Uh, but they do have some impact on housing supply, and there is some, some units that could quite easily be, be converted back into residential use for, for, whether that's by the owner or by long-term renters. So, um, you know, no one's trying to shut down the industry by any means, but they are trying to get a better handle on, on how that's managed and how it's, uh, how it's impacting the housing supply.
Yeah, the complaint isn't with us. The complaint's with the province, essentially. Go ahead, Counselor McGuire.
So it sounds like it's a flat rate, regardless of whether it's an extra bedroom in your house versus, uh, an entire apartment that you own up at the ski hill. Is that correct? It's a flat rate?
The, the province's rates, um, they do have a lower rate if you're, if you reside in that, that residential unit that you're using for short-term rental. It's a lower rate than if, if, if it's just an investment property that you're using for short-term rental.
And do we have the same thing internally as well?
Presently, we just have one rate.
Because maybe that's something we look at to help offset this, because if we're gonna be losing those people that only periodically rent out a unit, then maybe we should go to a tiered system too, and then maybe we won't lose some of those smaller. Uh, because again, you know, it's not really negatively impacting the housing market to have somebody rent out a room now and then in their house, especially if it's not full-time.
Thanks for the comments. Counselor McGuire. Go ahead, Counselor Dunneback.
One question. I wonder what the capacity is, uh, for those hundred and sixty-eight units? I wonder what the inspection cycle is for, like, the fire department and whatever else they might be, uh, obligated to do. And would either comment with the tiered system, uh, I think it's, it absolutely should be separated if the person is living there and had, in the dwelling, rather than having a whole unit, because then it becomes a more lucrative business, and, uh, it takes money to make money. And if you want to be in business, you, you gotta invest in, in it, and, and it, it takes it to a whole nother level. It is really simple, and I think it doesn't have to be this extreme, but I think that there should be a difference, you know?
Thanks, thanks for the comments, Counselor Dunneback. Last comments, Troy?
Just, just one quick, uh, comment to part of the comment question there. Thank you, Counselor Dunneback. Right now, the hundred and sixty-seven units that we've licensed, uh, so far this year, uh, that's equivalent to one thousand, one hundred and thirty pillows. So that's the, the potential nightly capacity of one thousand, one hundred and thirty people. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, um, do we, do we have any stats on what the average occupancy is? Any recent ones, Troy?
Nothing that's super reliable. Um, that's one of, one of the, the aspects of the provincial registry tool is they do have some data available on what they, like, because they do get, uh, the, the data that informs the provincial registry is provided by the platform, the listing platform, so Airbnb, VRBO, all the, all those platforms. And so part of the data that they propose supply is, is how many units in the last month, or last month, last year, whatever. And it's, it's very wide-ranging. There's, there's many, you know, there's fifty-some units that are, you know, well over a hundred nights a, a year. Uh, there's some that are over a couple hundred nights a year. Um, there's some that are, you know, around fifty or, or less, right? So it's, uh, it definitely varies from unit to unit. Some of that's by choice. Uh, some, some, some operators just don't wanna rent it out too often. And some, you know, would, would prefer to have it full every night, obviously, so.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for that. Last comment to Counselor McGuire.
Just one last question. Does it, does this provincial program, is there any ability for it to reduce our administrative burden? Or is it really not useful to us?
I, I think it's a little too early to, to know that answer for sure. I think, um, I think there's potential that, that, um, there is a administrative savings here in the long run if we can figure out how to better integrate the tools. Yeah.
All right, excellent. Thanks for the, uh, for the great information, Troy. Okay, uh, call receipt. Uh, call the question on receipt. All those in favor. Motion is carried. Okay, uh, that's the end of the regular agenda. We've got several items on in camera tonight. Uh, before we head there, do, does anybody want to make any comments on, uh, council assignments over the past two weeks? Uh, go ahead, Counselor Fox.
I just got a little update from the, um, accessibility committee, although I haven't actually, the, the hours of the accessibility committee meetings have not been accessible to me thus far. So I actually haven't been able to, um, attend much of them, but I did meet with the, um, uh, Kate, I'm gonna blank on her last name. I want to say it's Milne, who was, um, brought in for the age-friendly, um, uh, oh, I'm blanking. Thank you, hey, thank you, age-friendly accessibility plan. And I had a really good chat with her. It was, I think, the last day that she was here, and she said, um, she got a little, a lot of really good feedback, um, lots of, um, good information. And, um, she'll be bringing that forward. Yeah, I will be hearing more about that. Yeah.
Thanks for that. Okay, uh, could I have a motion to move in camera? Counselor McPain moves. Counselor Dunneback seconds. All those in favor. Motion is carried. All right, um, two minutes.